City Council Work Session for June 9. The City Clerk would please call the roll.
Yes. City Councilors Judith Chandler.
Present.
Gonchada.
Here.
Julie Wolf.
Here.
Susan Wolbrook.
Here.
E. Brunner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Nancy Fortune.
Present.
And Mayor John Graham.
Present. Well, Council, it looks like our first, actually, our first two agenda items were to be presented by, are to be presented by Leslie Lewis, but she's having trouble logging in. It does appear that the fourth item we have, which is the presentation discussion on the USGS, United States Geological Survey regarding the mineral spring sampling, we could go ahead and begin with that. Does anyone have an objection to starting with the USGS presentation?
No.
No objections? If that's all right, then let's go ahead. Judy, can you bring in the presenter for the USGS program presentation?
O'Connor Newman, one of them, and Denise, can you... The others are, if you'd like to.
May I interrupt for one second, Judy? Leslie's trying to log in and she's getting in progress and it's spinning and spinning.
So are we going to wait for Leslie or are we...
Denise, you're muted. I think you're...
I would go ahead and get her on, Judy, while we go ahead. It's up to you also, but I think it may take a moment to get Leslie in.
Okay, so I have Newman on, and who else are we bringing on for USGS?
And Suzanne Pashke.
Yes, she had her hand up. I don't know if she was our panelist or not.
Well, I guess no further ado then. Connor, you have the floor. Looking forward to your presentation.
You let me in. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. We can hear you, Suzanne.
Okay, sorry. I've been on here for a while and I've tried all kinds of different things and now it's working. Okay, thank you. I don't have a camera.
Yep, so I'll just start. I'm Connor Newman, hydrologist at the USGS Colorado Water Science Center and I'm one of the primary people who have been talking about the analysis for the springs.
Excuse me.
Yeah, Julie?
Are other people having trouble?
Yeah, this is garbled. Connor, it's hard to understand you. I think the bandwidth is such that we're only getting a little bit of what you're talking about.
I see that a couple other people aren't muted, so if everyone who's not speaking wants to mute, then there won't be a reverberation that might assist with the garbled speech.
Okay.
Because then when it basically replays and replays. Can you... Am I coming in any better now?
A little. Judy, I can't mute myself here. You could mute me if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, you guys make sure, you know, if I cut out at all, you know, any, I can see everyone's video still, so if I cut out, you can wave at the screen and I'll stop and back up some. But, so, I'm not sure how much of it of what I said previously came through, but I'm a hydrologist at the Colorado Water Science Center and I'm the project chief for this project and then Suzanne Pashke is the associate director of hydrologic studies at the Water Science Center and so, and she was the one who really spearheaded getting the project together. So that's the introduction to the two of us and then there's other USGS staff who may see us, you know, out around town sometimes wearing a bunch of, carrying a bunch of gear around and stuff. And so there's a couple of us who are working on the project. But I've got a presentation that's about, it's 18 slides long, so I'll try to share my screen and that should hopefully make it so that everyone can see it, although it's the same presentation that I provided last week. So does everyone have a copy of the PDF? Okay. Can people see my screen here?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Let me go and... So just what my presentation's gonna go through is I'm gonna take you through a little bit of the data that are now available for the several of the springs in Manatee Springs that are online on the USGS N West website and then I'll talk a little bit about installation of the new instrumentation that is the next thing that we're looking to do in terms of the field work down in the site. And then preliminary data analysis, I'm gonna show a few slides of just what USGS has done to date for the project and then that leads into future plans for data collection because data collection's ongoing down there. And then I'll end it with a project status and approximate timeline and I think as long as we're not having bandwidth issues anymore, if you, if anyone has a question at any point during the presentation, you know, unmute yourself if you're to jump in. I don't, we don't need to wait till the end or anything like that. So there are six sites which currently have data available through the National Water Information System, so if you have this PDF, the links on this page are live, so this link would take you to the main N West site that you probably wouldn't be interested in because you'd have to navigate down to get to the specific sites for Manatee Springs, but for each of these links to the below here, you click on any of them and it will take you directly to the page for that site. So got, and then in addition to these sites that are populated with data so far, Williams Canyon Deep is a seventh well that the USGS will be monitoring and there are not currently any data for Williams Canyon Deep in the N West database because the instrumentation for that well is malfunctioning and we haven't been able to obtain any data from it to date. So that's a little bit of the history there. Each of these wells has a...
Connor, Connor, could I interrupt you for just a minute? Could you back up and, and just a little bit? I reviewed your slides, but if you could just tell us why you're doing this contract and what problem you're addressing and, you know, just that little bit of background. It's been a while since I've, I've reviewed all of that.
Yep, certainly. So the, that's a good point. Thank you. The original scope of work for the agreement between the city of Manatee Springs and the USGS is aimed at basically a framework hydrologic understanding of the aquifer system. So the town has a number of springs and now many of them are wells, whereas originally, you know, I've read some of the history of it, many of these sites were actually places where water flowed directly out of bedrock at the surface and then over time, you know, development and changes in water levels have changed many of these spring locations. So there were seven spring locations, again, quote unquote, springs, many of them are drilled wells which flow because they're, because of the artesian water pressure within them. So there were seven sites that were identified through the initial scoping between the USGS and the city to be the most warranting of monitoring. So the USGS part of the agreement is to go out and monitor these seven sites for water levels and temperature and then several of the sites, or excuse me, just, just one of the sites moving forward, Seven Minute Spring, has specific conductance data, just an understanding of basically how much dissolved solids there are in the water. So the task, the first task of the USGS proposal is to go out and collect data from the springs on an ongoing basis. And then the second part of the agreement is to perform a hydrologic data analysis to understand basically where the water, where the groundwater in the aquifer is recharged, where it enters the aquifer and the flow paths that it takes along the way to the wells where it discharges. And then we would also, of course, want to understand if there are any other discharge points which are not at the surface, but for instance, the Manatee Springs confined artesian aquifer could communicate with other aquifers in that area. The Fountain Creek is right there, there's the alluvial aquifer. So part of our hydrologic analysis is to understand all of these dynamics of where the water's coming to, where the water's coming from and going to, is the short way. And then the third task of the agreement is to complete a groundwater flow model analysis. And so a groundwater flow model is a computer representation, a digital representation of the aquifer system and the processes which occur within it. So basically we'll take the data that we're collecting from these various wells and springs and then enter the data into this computer program along with all the other pieces of knowledge that we've gained through our preliminary hydrologic analysis and then we'll be able to predict groundwater flow paths in a quantitative way so that we could say if water is recharged in Williams Canyon, how long does it take to flow to Seven Minute Spring? So that's what the purpose of the groundwater flow model is, is it quantifies all these different hydrologic interactions. And then the end result would be, will be a report to, to the city, to the cooperator that goes through all those different steps.
And in terms of big picture, what will that prevent or advance or, I mean, you're talking about just data. What ultimately can we use that data for?
Yeah, so the hydrologic model, the groundwater flow model would be used to, or could be used to predict the potential degradation of the aquifer by, say, nitrate. You know, nitrate is one of the things that people everywhere worry about in the modernized world because it's a groundwater contaminant. So if we, so with the model, we could use a, could come up with a hypothetical situation of nitrate making it through Fountain Creek into one segment of the aquifer and then we could predict with the model where that nitrate would be most likely to show up in a groundwater well and where the nitrate would be less likely to show up in the groundwater well. And you could use it for any constituent, any contaminant of interest. I just use nitrate because most people are familiar with it. And then groundwater models in areas like Manatee Springs are also commonly used to look at how climate change might affect the groundwater resource. So early, the springs in Manatee Springs are a really important economic driver for the city. A lot of people come to visit the springs and climate change models have uncertainty with them, but one thing you can do with the groundwater flow model is we can say with 200 millimeters a year of recharge, this is how fast groundwater moves within the aquifer. And then you could look at a climate model for the city of Manatee Springs and maybe it says 150 millimeters a year of recharge is what's likely in 25 years from now. Then you, in the model, you could turn down recharge and see how much slower groundwater moves, how much faster groundwater moves, how much less groundwater there is available in the system.
Anyone else have any questions related to kind of big picture stuff there? Yep.
Hi. Is, I don't know if this is something you said already, but is there also an analysis about the, and maybe this is part of the flow, about whether we're running out of mineral spring water? And the reason I'm asking you that is I have like about three hours of reading that I've received from Dave Wolverton in terms of these really complex attachments and comments and emails he's had back and forth with you, back and forth with Roy. Honest to God, I have no idea what he's talking about, but I know that he's very distraught by the fact that he thinks you guys are failing to do certain testing and as a result of that, we can really be in bad shape in the future. All we're really doing is making sure that the water is kind of satisfactory for sun water to keep using and I don't know if that had to do with measurements you're not doing or he wanted, he thought there was an appropriate measurement you should use and you're using this other measurement that's not nearly as good or whatever. Are you able to help us understand what that whole thing is about? It might also understand what you're doing and why, other than, oh, it might be interesting and it affects, you know, climate change implications. If you could, and if that's really outside of the scope of your presentation today, I don't want to get scolded for asking you this question, so feel free to refuse to answer it if that's best for you.
Oh, no problem at all. I actually have a slide that is related to Dave Wolverton, what I believe is his primary concern. I thought he might be on, I thought he might be on anyway, so maybe he could articulate the concern directly to me, but I'm not sure.
He really wanted to be on. Last week I asked if he could be on with us. No one thought to invite him. I don't know who invited you, but whoever did didn't think of inviting Dave too. And by the time he got invited, you were already on the schedule and he, he's like in some other country or something and doing something or at least out of state, so he wasn't able to join us. Julie, I just wanna...
Suzanne, could I, could I add some things? I'd like to add a few comments. This was actually originally designed by Dave Wolverton. He approached me and Bill Banks, one of my predecessors, and it started as wanting the data for these seven sites to be available to folks, to be reviewed by the USGS and for someone to maintain the data. That was how it started and that was the original goal. I was concerned at the beginning because I wasn't clear on the equipment and so there were some concerns there. We originally, with respect to the equipment, said we would use what was there and Connor will talk about that. We haven't been able to access the equipment. It's, it's, it hasn't been maintained well enough and, you know, some of it was submerged and there's water damage. It's just physically not, not all working. So we've tried to address that and review the data and, you know, he was really looking for a steward of the available data. That was kind of his first emphasis. I know he's, his concerns that Connor and I have talked about are related to the shut-in tests and we can talk about that. And Connor and I have talked about how to move forward with that. And then the other part of it was that the previous work had gotten to the point of developing kind of a conceptual understanding of the system, but had not developed a groundwater flow model of the system. And what a groundwater flow model can do is really quantify the water moving in and out of the system, how much is recharged, where's it coming from, and then how is it discharged at the springs? So that was the second part of the proposed work that we're working on. Also to do analysis of the water level data that's available to look at changes over time in the water levels based on the historical data that we have available to us. So those were some of the goals of the, that were, were built into the study and we can talk about doing the shut-in tests. Not all the wells are conducive to doing the tests. They're just not physically possible in some of them that we can see and we could try. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of preface with some of those comments of how things developed, maybe.
This is Mayor Graham. If I might just add a couple of things, I was unable to mute, unmute myself a few minutes ago, but I have made an effort to keep Dave Wolverton in the loop and I did advise him when we had this on the agenda. So he had several weeks' notice. However, he has a work schedule that he can't fully control, so he's out of town and then further, he's, he's working, I think, until about 10 o'clock tonight, so he's unable to, to join us via Zoom. That was his original plan. So we did make an effort to, to keep Dave in the loop and, you know, I regret that he's not able to participate tonight like Julie. I looked through some of the documents and whatnot and it's, it's complex and I find it difficult to understand, but anyway, back to the presentation, please.
Sure. Yeah, and then, so Julie, I do have a couple of slides later on to talk about Dave's main concern there, but that's in a couple of slides from now, so we've got a couple of things to go through before then, I think. So this is, so these links are live. You can click on these in the PDF and it'll take you to the actual internet location. Everything else here is just a screenshot, so none of these will work, but this is a screenshot of, if you were to go to, you click on Mansions here, it will take you to this page. It tells you about the well depth, the hole depth, the altitude of the land surface, you know, what aquifer the well is completed in, all this and such. And then to actually be able to view the data on the web, you would click on this current historical observations hyperlink and then it will take you to this page where you can click on which different parameters you want to view on a graph. It'll tell you the available period for both of those, for all the data that you want to look at. And then you could, you could plot it as a graph that would be displayed in your web browser or you could download the data to a CSV file or a text file, anything else that you wanted to do there. And then you enter in the time period that you would want to use. So when Suzanne and I were talking about this today, Suzanne recommended that, you know, this, if the city or if the Manatee Springs Mineral Foundation would like to post these website pages on their website, it would, it'd be a direct link for the public to get to these, these data, which is, I think, what Suzanne was talking about, that that was one of Dave Wolverton's original goals, is that you wanted the data accessible to more people. So if you were to go through and do those steps for depth to water level for Iron Spring, it'll come up with this pretty plot of this blue line here. So not getting too deep into it, this is the, this is calculated from the data that we have downloaded and, from the springs ourselves and have been furnished to us by the Mineral Springs Foundation. So you can see that this depth to water level is negative, meaning the water level's above the ground surface for much of this data set. Again, not surprising because they're all flowing artesian wells, so a water level above the ground surface is why the well flows the way that it does. And then you can see here that the data for Iron Spring end in 2017. And this is, this is a preface to my next point, which talks about the fact that several of the instruments don't function anymore. And we're not sure why they don't function anymore. They could function, they could be not functional for a variety of reasons, including that they were installed quite a long time ago in terms of, this was installed in 2008. It's a pretty long time for this instrument to last down there anyway. But even if you didn't want it to last that long, they've got to be pulled out and recalibrated every once in a while, you know, every few years, basically. Send it back to the manufacturer, they recalibrate it and then they send it back to you. So there's a couple of gaps in here where we don't know what happened to the data in those gaps, but the instrument was probably starting to malfunction in 2016 and then it got, you know, healed itself for a little bit, but it ultimately, in Iron Spring anyway, it lost that battle in 2017, so there's a data gap in there. And there are several other data gaps for other springs as well, again, related to the instrumentation and the length of time that it can be in these conditions. And the conditions in the aquifer are harsh on metals. So, you know, the, a lot of the appeal of the aquifer, of the water that comes out of the springs is the, you know, that it's carbonated in some instances and that's cool to have to be able to drink, but it's very hard on metallic equipment, so. This is another just example plot that you could create from the N West webpage. This is specific conductance in the Seven Minute Spring. I've got this plot also later on because this relates directly to what one of Dave Wolverton's concerns with the open flow and shut-in testing. So that brings me to the instrumentation installation for the new equipment. So this table here on the left shows the different sites and then a checkbox is where the equipment has still been functional as of when I first visited in July of 2019 and an X means that that equipment is no longer functional. So as you can see, the majority of these have Xs here, so most of the equipment is really not in a functional state any longer. And I've obtained new equipment, replacement equipment for all of the wells, even the wells that we have been able to obtain the data, the equipment is still old. So I don't want, we don't want to risk having that equipment go down and then there would be another data gap. So we've got new equipment across the board for all the sites and that new equipment will be installed on July 8th and 9th and that's coordinated with Barnhart Pumps. And that is also at the request of Dave Wolverton in that he wanted someone who is really knowledgeable with all the piping systems and everything in each of these vaults. So this photo on the right here, that's the vault for Seven Minute. So as you can see, there's a lot of pipes in here and that's not even a quarter of the pipes that are in there. You know, there's a lot more pipes than that. So Dave requested that we work with Barnhart to have them with me, basically, when we do the installation, so I'll be there with the Barnhart pump representative. And I think it's a good idea because Barnhart, the Mark Rikello, I think is his, is his last name, he's the primary contact at Barnhart and he's been working in Manatee Springs for many years. So I think it's a good suggestion on Dave's part to have us work together on that, but July 8th and 9th is the first time that our schedules lined up together. So it's kind of like herding cats, typical, thanks for getting a meeting scheduled, but that will be when the new instruments are installed and they'll be installed in all the wells on those same two days. And this photo in the center just kind of shows what the new instrumentation will look like. So this sort of metallic cylindrical device is a pressure transducer, so I've ordered seven new pressure transducers and they will be replacing these pressure transducers, which is, kind of looks like a little battery or something like that, this little small metallic circular device I'm pointing to in the right photo. So this new transducer will be placed where the old transducer was, so it'll be a one-for-one replacement, basically. And then that was the main point that I had on the new instruments and then I'll go a little bit into the open flow and shut-in testing in a moment, but before we go back to kind of instrumentation, I just had a few slides in here on the preliminary data analysis for the data that we've gotten so far. This is just a schematic diagram, cross-sectional diagram of the potentiometric surface from a flowing artesian well. This is the situation in Manatee Springs. All these wells are flowing artesian wells, meaning that the pressure within the aquifer is great enough that the water, you know, actually shoots out the top. So a potentiometric surface, you could think of it as you would a hill slope, so in a, if you put a ball on a hill near your house, the ball rolls downhill because it's being affected by gravity. So water... So water goes downhill on the potential metric surface. And potentially metric surfaces oftentimes mirror the landscape. But in confined flowing artesian aquifers, they might not always mirror the landscape like that. So you can actually see that in this just conceptual diagram is that kind of out here on the right side of the diagram, the water table and the potential metric surface generally follow the kind of gently sloping hill over here. Whereas the potential metric surface does not agree with the sort of valley that we see in the center. So it's a simple diagram, but it's fairly applicable to the Manatee Springs area.
Connor, this is Councilwoman Walbrook. I have a quick amateur question for you. How far down are most of our wells? Like this, this particular diagram doesn't show me like in feet, how many feet down we are at each phase of this diagram?
Yeah. So most wells that we have records for are in the range of 200 to 350 or 375 feet deep. For instance, we can see that here with Mansions. So the hole is 280 feet deep at Mansions, but the well itself is only 177. So basically, when they drilled this well, they, for whatever reason, determined that they only had to complete the actual portion, the case portion of the well to 177 feet. Whereas the hole is actually much deeper, and that might be because it's competent bedrock below that. So when you drill a monitoring well and when we drill any sort of groundwater well in like a sand, you put a casing in from the surface that keeps the well from caving in on itself. But in some bedrock, which the Manatee Springs formation is a bedrock aquifer, sometimes the well can just stand open on its own, under its own forces. So in which case it wouldn't have casing all the way down to the bottom. So Mansions, I think, is on the shower end for wells. There are at least a couple that are over 300 feet deep. I think Williams Canyon Deep is one of the deeper ones. So when we look at the data that have been analyzed so far for the Manatee Springs aquifer, this is clearly a map of the just the area and these white dots are the different measurement points that we have a water level measurement from. So these the white points are wherever we have a data set like this. So this depth to water level and feet below land surface, we use that to calculate the elevation of the potential metric surface, which again is this surface right here. And then with multiple points across the aquifer where we have an elevation in feet above sea level of the potential metric surface, then we make a map that shows how the potential metric surface changes over time. So it's basically just like a topographic map. Same concept. So this is a potential metric surface map for the central portion of the Manatee Springs aquifer. And these arrows just show that the direction of groundwater flow is basically from the west down to the east. So in this case, it actually is generally following the topography of the land surface. And in addition to following the topography, the Manatee Springs formation dips down to the east. So the whole formation, the whole Manatee Springs formation itself is inclined down to the east. So the groundwater flow is going down dip within the formation itself. And so we'll be able to, as we continue to collect data, we'll be able to make a map such as this for different time periods. So one of the things we want to look at for the groundwater model and understanding how climate affects the availability of water in the aquifer is I'll make a map like this for drought periods. And then if the groundwater flow is substantially different during the drought period, that could tell us that the aquifer is more susceptible to potential climate change. And if the groundwater flow is unchanged by drought, then that is a good thing for groundwater sustainability. Because then it is less dependent on the short term fluctuations. And then this slide has geochemical equations on it, which we don't really have to spend a huge amount of time going into. But basically, they just show that different minerals dissolving within the aquifer produce different ions in solution, which I think probably makes sense to anyone. You know, if you dissolve salt in a glass of water, that's the same thing that's happening here. But the Manatee Springs formation itself is made out of calcite and dolomite, or two of the primary minerals that make up the aquifer. And so when you dissolve calcite and dolomite in water, you get these very distinctive water chemistry signatures that we'll look at when we're creating the model to understand how long water spends interacting with the aquifer. Basically, how the amount of time it takes to flow from place A to place B. And this is a just a diagram of whether the minerals that I just showed were dissolving or precipitating. So when calcite dissolves, it goes from CaCO3, which is the solid calcite mineral. You add water and you add CO2, and that produces calcium and this thing called bicarbonate. And then a similar process is occurring for dolomite. And then calcite plus dolomite is just a longer equation, but the same thing is going on. So here I've plotted the dissolution precipitation of calcite and dolomite. So anything, any data point that plots up here in the right hand side, right hand quadrant of this graph is where that water, we would say, is geochemically evolved. That water has interacted with a lot of rock on its way to wherever it is. And water that is in the bottom left quadrant of the graph is geochemically young, we would say. So it has not had much time to interact with any aquifer that's more fresh rainwater, snow melt, stream flow, stuff like that. So the without, you know, trying to get too deep into the boringness of geochemistry, the main thing that I wanted to show with this is that wells in the western portion of the aquifer, so that's the blue squares here, wells in the western portion of the aquifer are less mature geochemistry, geochemically. They are younger waters. Those waters have, they were snow melt not too long ago. Not so there's, when I talk about young and old, I'm not talking about the, this analysis doesn't allow us to say 22 years old or 51 years old. It's just a relative sliding scale. So the waters in the western portion of the aquifer are younger, quote unquote, than most of the waters in the central portion of the aquifer. So more of these gray, or excuse me, the green circles. The green circles tend to plot farther up and to the right. So those are, those have spent a lot more time interacting with the aquifer itself. If that makes sense. So now this slide is related to, this is the first of a couple of slides that are related to one of the main concerns, I think, that Dave had. And that's the how well we are in agreement with the Manatee Springs Aquifer Monitoring Program Manual. And I'm not sure, that's probably one of the documents that he sent you guys. It's kind of thick, but it's it's interesting. It was really well done. Also, that was done by John Shoemaker and Associates, which is a consulting firm out of Albuquerque. So in this top left text here, that I, that's directly a screenshot from the John Shoemaker and Associates report. Also, specifically what John Shoemaker and Associates recommend is periodic shut in of the wells and open flow of the well. So when they say shut in and open flow, they mean you would go down into the well vault, save for seven minute spring, and there's a way with the piping orientation to shut the well off. So at that point, all the pressure that was driving water out of the ground and over to the font, the font will stop flowing and all that pressure will be built up within the aquifer right around seven minute. And you allow the pressure to build for a period of time and basically, the period of time depends on how long it takes to get to the place that you want it to be. So it's not something that we can say for certain. But at the end of the specified period of time that you decide to let it build pressure, you would then completely open the valve and allow the well to flow without constraint. So currently, when seven minute flows to the font, it's actually under a constraint, a flow constraint. Only two gallons per minute are allowed to come out of the font, and that's based on the diameter of all the piping and everything that goes over the font. So when you allow it to open flow, the water is diverted instead of to the font, the water goes to Fountain Creek. And the well is just allowed to flow at whatever amount of water it can generate to come out of the ground. And so that is schematically illustrated kind of here on the right. So the brown line is the pressure head. So when you shut the well in, the pressure within the well changes. And then the flowing rate also changes as you allow the well to flow freely. And then eventually, at the end of the time period that we want to allow the well to flow freely, you would divert the water back to the font, and then it's under a flow restriction. So then the flow rate would come down to the amount that is available to go through the piping to the font. And so the main point that I wanted to bring up about shut in and open flow testing is it's, I just think everyone should think about why we're doing. And I think John Shoemaker and Associates reports are very detailed, but this is the one instance in which they really don't go into much detail about why we would shut in and open flow. They suggest it. And then at the end of this quote, it says it's an indication of the well's efficiency and health. And so that's kind of a kind of a big statement. So it's part of USGS protocols to shut in artesian flowing wells to get the potential metric measurements that I was talking about earlier, which we'll use to create the map of where groundwater flows from and to. It's a standard USGS procedure to shut the well in when you make that measurement. Now, the open flow is not a standard USGS procedure to do every single time you go to a well, to a flowing artesian well. But it is not against any USGS procedure either. It's just not specified within the procedures because the main thing that our procedures are based on is the collection of accurate water level data. So again, that data on what elevation the water table surface is. And the flowing test actually has no, you don't gain any information on the elevation of the water table surface from the flow. It that the flow does not inform the elevation of the water table. The flow, the amount of flow over time would be useful for inclusion in the groundwater model. Again, getting into boring equations at 7:00 PM at night, so kind of risky, but this equation here relates the flow from a well to this aquifer property that we call transmissivity. So this T, uppercase T here. So I need to enter a transmissivity value into the groundwater flow model. It's just how the modeling procedure works. I have to enter it in. So we would want to do the shut in and open flow testing maybe a couple of times to be able to calculate this T. But in terms of doing it again and again and again, theoretically, the answer would come up the same each time. So we wouldn't be a standard USGS procedure to shut it in and allow it to open flow each time you go down. Because you're going to measure probably something that is very, very close to the same number again and again and again. And in terms of the groundwater model, it only needs to know what T is once, it doesn't need to know what T is a thousand times. So that's the two points I wanted to make on why we're doing shut in and open flow testing. And then the last point is that here in John Shoemaker and Associates text, they suggest doing shut in and open flow at Mansions Spring, Seven Minute Spring and Stratton Spring. And in discussions with Barnhart Pump Company, they don't believe that Mansions and Stratton have casings that can stand up to this testing. So specifically, Mansions Spring is all is currently shut in. And we don't have any, that's one of the areas where the instrument has failed. So we don't have any current data for Mansions Spring. But Barnhart doesn't believe that it can be reliably shut in because the casing will leak. And then Stratton, similarly, Barnhart believes that that casing will not support a shut in test. So addition to thinking about why we would do it and how often we would do it, we have to think about if it can be done at each of these three locations. It can be done at seven minute. We did it in December when I was down there. So it it is done at seven minute spring, and it can be done reliably there. But at other locations, you know, I'm inclined to take Barnhart's word because they've been working down there for a long time. So and then this is another diagram on the shut in and open flow testing. This is data from Seven Minutes Spring when it was shut in in October of 2018. So basically, you can see that when you shut it in, this pressure within the well at the wellhead increases until some static value. And then when you let the well flow uncontrolled, the pressure decreases through time as more of the pressures let out by the flow of water. And then the final thing that I had to say on shut in and open flow testing is that one of the reasons I believe John Shoemaker and Associates proposed it is to benefit the sun water spa. So the sun water spa, it's desirable for them to have water with a high total dissolved solids because that is the water that they use to fill their spa up. So they want a water that has a high mineral character. Whereas, you know, dissolved, you know, deionized water would not be desirable to them. So this is a graph of specific conductance through time for Seven Minutes Spring. Basically, you can see that the specific conductance is going down over time. So they don't want that. And John Shoemaker and Associates came up with a really interesting explanation for this, and it's it's kind of long and gets down into the weeds, but suffice it to say that when you, they discovered that when you shut the well in and then allow it to open flow, it increases the specific conductance in the water that comes out of the well. And so that is a desirable outcome from the sun water spas perspective. So that is another reason to do shut in and open flow testing. But again, to think about how often doing these things is, I think, important. And in terms of future data collection, we'll collect stream flow measurements at five, four or five places throughout Manatee Springs. And this allows us to calculate if any water from Fountain Creek is being lost into the aquifer. And then this fancy spike device kind of does the same thing. So this is a device that I'll go out and I'll drive it into the stream bed, and then we can use it to calculate or indicate how much water is either coming into the stream or being lost from the stream. And then that was, this is the last slide. So this is on the timeline of the project. And so you can see this red lines about where we are right now. And then task one, these are the tasks that I was talking about earlier. So the So the, the continuous monitoring and then the data analysis and the flow model. And then it will eventually be in a report that is publicly available and delivered to the city of Manitou Springs.
Thank you, Connor. Um, council members, do you have, excuse me, Connor, or are you finished, I think?
Yeah, yeah.
But let's see if there's questions for you then, uh, for you and Suzanne. Uh, council, do we have questions for Mr. Newman or for Suzanne? And I can only see a couple of people, so um if you could, if anyone has a question, please speak up. Okay.
Presentation because then that would open up the screen to see everybody.
Oh, yeah, here, I'll stop.
Okay. Great. Um, so council, I guess this is a good time for questions and comments. Do you have any? It's Swiss, I think, I found it pretty technical. The, the little bit that I thought I understood, I thought was pretty interesting. But uh frankly, it was uh, I guess I'm more for one-on-one hydrology. Um, I know David, uh, it's, excuse me, Susan.
Yes, thank you. I just have one question. Is this going to be on our website? I know it's part of this packet, but I mean, just in terms of availability to the public for this presentation?
I guess it could be. Um, yeah, we could go ahead and make it public. Now I see Denise Knight in her head. I mean, this is paid for with taxpayers' money. So I think it, uh, by all rights belongs in the public domain.
And what about the Mineral Springs website? Would it be valuable to put it there? Foundation, I'm sorry, Mineral Springs Foundation.
I don't think it'll cost anything to put a link in there. I don't know if we have anyone with us tonight from the Mineral Springs Foundation. I know Terry Sharpton said he'd be unable to attend. Judy, do we see, do you see anybody out there from the Mineral Springs Foundation?
It looks like he's on it, but I can reach out to him and see if they can get it on their website too.
Okay, that, that sounds good.
This is Suzanne. If we're gonna post it, uh, we need to have it reviewed and approved. We have to do some technical review to release stuff. So um we'll do that in the next week or so and um and provide you a, you know, a copy that doesn't say not for distribution on it. So that it can't be distributed.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bremner, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just had some general questions. Um, I was trying to understand, I guess there's no decision that we have to make on this. But, and I guess what you're saying is that some of the equipment that's out there is broken and you're going to go in and fix it. That's, that's what I got.
Yeah, gonna replace them instead of fix them because they've been, they've been down for a while. And it's pretty difficult to, to repair equipment like this. It's more cost effective just to replace it completely.
It's, yeah, it has a limited life. You know, it's been in there over 10 years already. So usually those types of um transducers, you know, we usually use them for maybe five or six years before we replace them. Um, yeah, we were provided um data on a CD when, you know, there've been a few delays in um getting information. Shelley, I can't remember her last name. She was the Public Works Director when we began this. And she provided us uh downloads of, of available data from all the computers at Public Works that she could find, and that's what we have. And then when Rich took over and we realized that the equipment had failed and that we couldn't find all of the data, they did do additional searches of other computers and laptops of people that had been maintaining it from Public Works from about 2017 till we got involved. And then the um, and they provided us with what they could. And then the Mineral Found, Springs Foundation approved the um purchase along with Rich Fabro of the new equipment and that they would pay for that. And the idea being that um the plan was for the agreement to come to the city of Manitou Springs and for the foundation to pay the city for that equipment. And there's also USGS funds being contributed to all of this as well, so.
Thank you, Council Wolbrook.
So to feed off of that, it sounds like getting this data from multiple Public Works employees and computers was difficult. Are we in a better space for that now? Can, and if that, we don't have the answer for that now, we can answer it later. But um do we have a better plan for tracking this data in the future so that it's not spread across multiple employees and multiple employees' devices?
Um, well, that was the uh purpose of us taking on the monitoring and getting it set up. And so I would say is, you know, we end our work. Well, first of all, I'd like to propose to you an offer that we continue our monitoring for another year of our work um because of the delays that have occurred. We had delays on both sides of, you know, we had our government shutdown in 2019 that affected us and so forth. So it's, there have been some delays there. Um, and then in terms of getting data and then finding the equipment, um, non-functional, et cetera. So we'd like to offer that up. And if we could change the timeline with no cost increase to, to do that. Then the other, um, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. I'm starting to get hungry. I need dinner. Then I think to answer your question, then, you know, we would leave that and set it up for you all. But it would be up, you know, we could help with a setting up a program where that would continue. But um, you know, that was an issue, I think, is the maintenance and the um keeping up with the data downloads and checking on the equipment calibrations and so forth.
So you're proposing that we, we consider you guys doing it for another year. And during that time, we would need to make sure that our staff set up the proper monitoring setup to take over when that's done. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Bremner, did you have another question?
Uh, just related to the shut in and open flow testing, you said that two of the uh well sites, some of the, the spring sites, the, the casement wasn't, couldn't handle the, the uh the shut in. Is there any, is there any mitigation for that? Or we just say, throw up our hands and say we can't do it?
Yeah, actually, the Seven Minute well uh several years ago was re-drilled be, because of that, that concern right there. So the, the long-term option would be to potentially re-drill wells or re-case them. Um, you know, do a rehabilitation. It's not always necessary to completely re-drill it. I do have some documentation on how that was done in Seven Minute. But in terms of just the, the short term for this project, I would propose that we try to test, try to put those in. And then when we're with the new instruments, we'll see what happens. And we'll be able to know if the casing is bad or not. Because of, well, we'll be able to probably, no, you can never tell for sure unless you put a camera down. But we'll get an indication of how the, of the casing conditions uh, once we do shut those wells in. So I would say that at least on, at least the first time we have all the new instruments set up, we would want to shut in Mansions and Stratton and see what, what comes of them. But my gut feeling is that, you know, trusting in what Barnhart knows about the, the sites is that I think that we'll probably find that, that a casing is not completely solid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So one of our um procedures for um, excuse me, monitoring water levels in Artesian wells for USGS, our procedure is, you know, if we've got the instruments in the hole, that we visit the site every six weeks and um do a shut in if it's possible to. Because when you shut in the well, the water level rises in the well, as Connor described. And it reaches some equilibrium static level. And that's what you'd like to record as your potentiometric surface elevation for that well. And um, but that's our procedure. And that's what we would propose to do moving forward, where we can do the shut ins. And then uh an open flow at least once to get the uh transmissivity calculation that Connor was describing.
Thank you. Uh, city clerk, please, Judy?
Yes, we have, um, somebody on the attendee side named Kelly Snyder with her hand up, off and on through this item. I don't know if.
Um, Kelly is a member of the Mineral Springs Foundation Board of Directors. So I think it would be useful to, to bring her in.
Okay, I will move her over then. Okay. So Kelly, you've been moved over to the, the speaking side and you're unmuted.
Thank you. Um, I have been listening to my first work session. As technical as it is, I got a lot of it. I'm really proud of our partnership with the USGS. I can't, um, I am the vice president. I can't make any decisions, but I do really want my board to see this presentation. It's very valuable. We've had a great working relationship with USGS. And Dave started a lot of good work. So I just wanted you to know I was listening and taking notes. I'll take it back to my board. And I'm really grateful for all you, everyone's hard work, city council and USGS. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. Do we have any, any additional uh council comments or questions? Looks like we're pretty well satisfied for now. Connor, I, I suspect that Mr. Wolferton may have some follow-on questions for you and Suzanne. In the event that that happens, I would request that you just meet one-on-one with him and, and you try to resolve the questions or shed light at that point. I think probably uh his level of expertise far exceeds most of councils. And we do have rather a lot of things on our plate. So if that's, if that sounds reasonable for you, uh, that's the uh direction I think council would, would be willing to take. Anybody, anybody oppose that thought? I'm gonna hand this off to Dave, basically. Okay, we're good with that. Well, I think this is, it's been a nice presentation. Connor, Suzanne, we appreciate your walking us through this. I think we're smarter. I'm not as smart as I'd like to be on this, but I'm better. So appreciate it very much. You guys have a good evening.
Thanks a lot, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you now.
Bye-bye. Take care, everyone.
You too. Judy, do we have, uh, do we have Leslie available now? Leslie Lewis?
We do. She is on there. She's not muted. There she is. I will move her over.
Okay, I would, I'd like to go back to what was originally our first agenda item, which is the
Would you like me to?
Chamber of Commerce marketing presentation.
Would you like me to bring back Davis over right now as well?
Yeah, please.
Where did Leslie go? Oh, I got the wrong Becca. I'm sorry. Sorry, let me move that one back. This is the first name. There we go. I think I got the right one this time. And let me see why Leslie didn't show up. Are you there, Leslie? I'm not seeing you. She was on the on the list and I brought her over, but I'm not seeing her. Let me see if, there she is, there. Okay. It just took a few minutes. All right. Let me I'll go ahead and unmute her. Typically, she should be able to do that, but.
Good evening, and I apologize for all my technical difficulties this evening. When you moved me over, I got disconnected again, I guess.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, that's a little temporary thing. So um I'm just here to, to introduce Leslie. I'm, I'm sure you, everyone knows her. But uh Leslie is the executive director of the Manitou Springs Chamber of Commerce and has been invited to present the chamber's marketing, marketing strategy for 2022 city council, just so we can get everyone up to speed about what their plans and intentions are. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Leslie. Take it away, Leslie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to go through this again, again with you because it has been a while and 2020 has been an interesting year with some definite changes. So when the, the COVID-19 hit, we did, the end of March, put things on hold because it didn't make sense to do a lot of advertising when everything was closed. So we have um started all of our campaigns again now that things are starting to open up. Um, so Judy, can you start the presentation?
Yes, I was going to ask if you want me to go ahead and do the share screen for you. Just make sure I'm getting the right one here. There we go. Okay, can you see that?
Yes, yes. Um, and so I had Mackenzie Helms, who is our marketing coordinator, put this together. And these are just some examples of some of the um marketing pieces that we have used either in 2019 because some stuff hasn't launched again yet, or 2020. So the next slide. Can I scroll? Will it let me do that?
I think because I'm, I got online, I'll have to do that.
Okay, so uh the 2020 Visitors Guide actually just came out because as we were going to print, that's when everything shut down. We did reduce the number. In 2019, we printed 80,000 guides. And we were down to about 2,000 when we recently reprinted. Um, we use the guide not only in Manitou, in hotels here and in the visitor center, but it's distributed through Colorado Springs Hotels and Denver major hotels. We ship them in bulk to the welcome centers across the state. Um, and they are in the Denver and Colorado Springs airport. We also have a lot of the retail shops in downtown that like to get them and hand them out to their guests. Next slide. So Facebook, this actually is Visit Manitou Springs. And um we don't spend a lot of money advertising locally because in Manitou Springs, we expect the residents to already know about us um and not be part of that reach. But this particular Facebook page is our local page. We have 53,041 followers actually as of today. So you could see our weekly impressions. Generally, we post anywhere from two to five posts a day. Um, a lot of it is sharing Manitou content or member content. And then some are original posts from us. We do have a social media person who does this for us and watches the statistics on that. Um, Amy Mock is also doing our Instagram. And Instagram is the growing kind of um market for, I think, younger people. So we're up to 14,117 followers there. Um, and we do have followers from five different countries. And then Fox 21, actually known as Next Star Digital. Is the company that we use to place digital advertising around not only the state of Colorado, but also. In, in different states in the drive market. So the results that are shown on the screen are from February to March. Last year, we worked with them. They evaluated all of our subscribers to our email, our visitor email. And kind of developed a profile of the people who typically come to Manitou. And so then now when they place ads, they look at, at different areas of the country where we typically see visitors come from, but they also. Target people that match those profiles. And then also in April and May, Fox 21. As a partner through the digital campaigns, ran 70 free 15 second Manitou spots for us. We work with Pike's Peak Region Attractions Association. For lots of different things, but one of the things that we did in 2019 was this digital itinerary co-op that we did with them. So in addition to having historic Manitou Springs as one of the attractions to visit. Throughout the different itineraries that they did, three day, five day. In all of these different four categories, they used our restaurants, they used our lodging properties, and they used our attractions. This campaign, we paid $1,000 on each of these and they matched it with $1,000 on each of those. And you can see the kind of reach that they had. We are doing that again this year with them. Okay, Judy, next.
Could I interrupt just a minute? I've, I've lost a screen display. Is anyone else suffering from that or is it just me?
Mine's fine, John. I can see it easily.
Okay, well, I've got a loner machine, so I guess that's, it's in my, my problem. I can, I can read the slides on another computer, so please go ahead. Thank you.
And this particular sign, we just recently created and put up on the bulletin board at the trailhead for Bar Trail. We also created a box that holds our downtown map and. Put those maps in there. The map, the map box just went up on. May 28th, and so far we've had 233 of the maps taken from those, from that box. We're going out every Monday and Friday and checking the stock and counting how many are in there. So as we start running additional promotions. And we are currently in the process of printing a discount card to 28 Manitou stores that wanted to participate. Those are at the printer. As soon as we get them in, we'll put a notice on this board. So we can catch those hikers that are coming down Bar Trail to let them know that they can come by the chamber and pick up. One of these discount cards to support the businesses in downtown. We'll also. I know Annie Schmidt, who worked on recruiting businesses, has talked to Rhonda about doing an article in the Pike's Peak Bulletin. On the cards as soon as they're available. Unfortunately, with. This year being what it is, the Nikki Bloom concert got canceled in April, the Margarita March in. In March was also canceled. Currently, we have hopefully one of those that can continue in September. But we also canceled the Wine Festival recently. So, but we do a lot of event graphics for, for those types of, of things going on in Manitou. The State Vacation Guide is one of the print ads that we do. They publish 450,000. And they reach a market that's way beyond our reach. We also have an online presence with Colorado.com. And that's the 2020 ad that's showing. First Friday Art Walk. We were sponsoring the shuttle on that. And again, you know, they went to the virtual, but they have been running the ad on their virtual website. Colorado Fun Guide. Is another print publication we do, and this is the one that we just submitted. That's kind of our tagline for this year is that Manitou Springs is your base camp for Pike's Peak Adventures. To try and pull the outdoor people as well as kind of show that we've got some wide open spaces. So as people are a little bit concerned about. Being inside, we can let them know that there are still things to do and enjoy our area. Karen Hazelhurst does that publication and you can see where it's distributed. Next. Springs Magazine Relocation Guide. Unfortunately, that publication's not going to continue after this year, but they are printing the relocation guide for Colorado Springs. And they also get it into the military bases. So we wanted to try and let the people moving to the area. As well as those looking at relocating to the area to come look at Manitou as a possible new home. The Indy last year was part of our holiday campaign. We also were on KKTV. Several different radio stations. That probably. Wasn't our best ad design, but. We do advertise a lot locally during the holiday season in Colorado Springs and Manitou, as well as in the Denver area for the holidays. And then Colorado Life Magazine we did last year. We're not doing that in 2020, but it is mailed throughout the state. We typically do that for more event related. But under the contract, sometimes we have a couple of general ads thrown in. And then the Colorado Springs Visitors Guide is the other big local print publication that we do. And when I say local, it's the Colorado Springs and Pike's Peak Region Guide. So they mail out 425,000 copies. As well. So it does give us that reach of people who know of Colorado Springs, but maybe haven't heard of Manitou and they're coming to the area. And we want to pull them over to Manitou to stay and to enjoy the shops and the restaurants and all that Manitou has to offer. As well as the mineral water, which is obviously one of our, our economic drivers.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
Oh, thank you. Did you say we're spending money to try to bring more people? To move here?
I think as people are, are living in the area, we always want them to look at Manitou as a possible home as they're relocating to Colorado Springs.
I don't agree with using taxpayer dollars for that. I'd rather the realtors pay for that. We're not lacking people who live here. We don't have long term extensive. Vacancies and unsold properties and I'd like us to focus on something else personally.
Well, the other reason to use that publication, Counselor Wolf, is because it does go out to the military bases. So as people are relocating to Fort Carson or the Air Force Academy or Shriver, we want them to be aware that Manitou is over here and has a lot to offer. And a lot of.
I just don't think we need, I just personally don't think it makes sense to spend taxpayer dollars. Trying to convince the military or anybody else in the world to please hurry up and get here because that's not one of our problems. We have a lot of problems, but that's not one of them.
Okay, all right.
Personally, I mean, you know, I just wanted to mention it because I don't know, you know, I have no idea if we've ever given you any direction on our policy. I don't. I've never been told if council has ever given any policy or guidance to. You know, your organization on how we want you to spend our money. So I'm not. Trying to be critical or I'm just saying personally, this is a good example about why. I wish we could talk about things on a policy level as council before. Staff and the chamber just go off on doing stuff. I know Nancy's trying to raise her hand.
Okay, that's, yeah, Nancy, Nancy.
No, I was just going to say on the relocation, what, what it does and what it certainly did for me, even though I ended up moving here. But it gets people who normally might never come over here to at least see the city and want to come visit, not necessarily to live here. But it's an opportunity to be exposed to Manitou. So I, you know, you're going to decide where you're going to live based on what's available and how close you are to a base and so on. But I think it serves a better purpose of just getting people over here and say, you know, oh, it'd be nice to come here and visit sometime even if I don't live here. So. I found it useful that way as well.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Walbrook?
Yes, thank you. Leslie, didn't you say that that magazine isn't going to continue past 2020, though?
It is. That company is, has closed their doors. Okay, so.
I have a couple of comments. That I want to catch up with before you move on in your presentation. Most of them are small. And then to respond, respond to Councilwoman Wolf's concern, this seems like a good thing to talk about during budget too. Because in budget session, we allocate the money to the chamber as part of the promotions budget. And even though we might have not done that in the past, I think I agree with you. And these are the types of issues that we could talk about during budget sessions, I think. Where we get that opportunity to talk a little bit about policy. That's just my comment about that. This next question is for, for Leslie. Is Pike's Peak Country Attractions now Pike's Peak Regional Attractions?
It is. They changed their name.
The downtown map, was that updated for 2020?
It has not been updated yet. We are getting down to the last of those. So we're using those up and that is the next thing to be updated.
Okay, and it's probably a good time post COVID, hopefully post COVID, right? I don't know if that's a good thing to say, but it'll be a good time to update it. Also. Broken record on this, but the map in Wichita Law, still old?
Yes.
So I guess my question about that is not for tonight, maybe, but I, we don't update that map. So I'm wondering how useful it ends up being. And maybe if there's not a better use for the other side of that board. That's not something that was mentioned in part of your presentation, but having a map that's not accurate, just, and it seems like we. For whatever reason, I'm not, it's not, that's not about the reason, but I, I'm just questioning whether that's the best use of the back of that board. I assume you canceled the Wine Festival because you just think that it's probably, people aren't going to be willing to come. And then I know you talked about social media and I know that Snapchat is a really young group of people, but they do a filter so that when you're in Manitou Springs, you can tag your Snapchat. With that, that filter that has like the graphic for Manitou Springs. And I just know that my own children are way into this on Snapchat because, and, and it's just, it's really free advertising when you think about it. And I know that you guys had worked on that and I just wanted to make sure that was still happening with that social media platform.
We have used Snapchat mainly for our different events, but I will certainly ask Mackenzie to look at it as just a general, have it available for Manitou Springs.
It's a filter that you create so that when you're in Manitou, Snapchat automatically says, do you want to use this cute Manitou Springs graphic? As you post this little tiny video. And so that's why it's useful because when people do the Snapchat, then it'll show that graphic that we provide to Snapchat. So it could be your logo or, you know, the Visit Manitou Springs logo.
Well, and to go back to the Wine Festival, the reason the Wine Festival was canceled actually was because at this point, you're not supposed to have gatherings of over 10 people. And so even at an outdoor event, it didn't seem that we, that that would be a safe thing to do.
Okay, so much.
Leslie, I believe you had more to, for your presentation. Is that?
That kind of goes through the, the samples of the work that, that we. Brought together. For this. On that, on that downtown map, we will get that updated and, and I agree, Counselor Wal, Walbrook, I'm sorry. That, that map on the back of the Wichita board does need to be updated. We've got a couple of changes going on right now. And so we'll let that settle and figure out who can do it. The company that used to do it went out of business a long time ago. That's been. One of the minor, minor issues that's kept us from doing that. And I don't know if you all heard today that the county commissioners actually approved a variance. That would allow a lot of businesses to move forward with reopening. So that variance is being sent to the governor's office. And one of those is the attractions in the area. So I think once we see the attractions start to open. We'll see a lot of additional visitors coming back to the region.
Good. Counsel, do we have additional questions or comments for Leslie? Okay, it looks like we're pretty well satisfied right now. Leslie, thanks for your presentation there. I would suggest before we move to the next topic that we maybe take a 10 minute break. Anybody opposed to that? Okay, we'll take a 10 minute break. I have 7:36. Let's get back. It's a 7:46. Thanks. About all back. Okay, so the next item of business is a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce. Again, this will be the chamber's plan. For distributing the CARES Act grant funding to local small businesses. Leslie, I believe you're going to be presenting on this.
Right. Should I introduce her again?
I think our memories are okay. I think we can handle that.
Okay, so, so. As part of the CARES Act. March 27th, Congress approved the CARES Act and then May 5th, El Paso County voted to distribute some of the funds to. Local governments. And May 19th. Manitou Springs Council adopted the resolution, an IGA with El Paso County for distribution. And city staff had recommended that $200,000 of that CARES Act money be given to us to distribute to. The small businesses that were suffering from the ramifications of COVID-19. And actually today, the county commissioners also approved that the Manitou IGA. Also, there should be a PowerPoint. There is a PowerPoint. If Judy wants to start that again.
There you go.
So you can go actually two slides, please Judy. So. Working with Becca Sickbird, who is the new Creative District Director. We sent a survey out to the businesses in Manitou Springs. And that survey. We sent it to 175 email addresses. 55 responses were received. There were actually. I think 15 industries represented. 15 industries responded, but their top concerns as business owners were related to cash flow. And their business survival and protecting their businesses from financial loss, making payroll and, and paying rent and mortgages were the top. Three concerns. And then the top request that they had was for marketing and financing help. So to help promote. The shop local campaigns with residents. was for marketing and financing help. So to help promote the shop local campaigns with residents, additional marketing support for Manitou and understanding the small business grants and financing options that were out there. We provided lots of information on the, the programs that have been available, PPP, EIDL, some of those loan programs, as well as the forgivable loan programs, the PPP. And actually, I just sent something new out today because they've recently made some changes to that program. Um, so this program, um, in working with the city grant, um, team, we looked at, um, creating reopening assistance grants and that. So, um, even though they had some help, um, with their payroll expenses through PPP or their mortgage interest, we felt that there might be some additional expenses that came along. And one that was pointed out to me today is the cost for restaurants to provide, um, disposable menus because you can no longer use a permanent menu. So they have to keep giving those out. So this program was intended to help the local businesses reduce the economic impact of COVID-19, to support the local economy with micro grants and to offer eligible businesses grants of up to $2,000, depending on how many applications are received and the amounts that are requested. This is a pretty quick, so the eligible businesses that we're looking at obviously have to be in Manitou and they need to be a brick and mortar store. They must be a for-profit business and have had 25 or fewer employees. They must pay sales tax or excise tax. Um, and then they have to be in good financial standing with the city, their business license and sales tax and utility payments up to date as of February. Um, and then they also need to demonstrate that they've had a significant impact to their business. And we thought we could look at the March-April 2020 revenue compared to March-April 2019 revenue to determine businesses with an, with the, with an impact, negative impact.
Leslie, could I ask a question?
Certainly.
Okay, thanks. Um, on the, what was the rationale for saying that they must have 25 or fewer full-time equivalents?
So that it would be a small business.
And that's a definition of small business? Okay, thank you.
Well, actually, in some worlds, 500 or fewer is a small business, but, um, I think the reality for us is 25 or fewer. Um, so looking at trying to turn this very, very quickly was one of the, one of the goals. So we were looking at after council approves this, um, which we're hoping would be next week. Um, then we have a very basic matrix that the, the chamber will collect the, um, applications in our office. We will look at a very basic, um, basic matrix, you know, do they have 25 or, or did they have 25 or fewer employees? Are they for profit? Are they an independently owned business or an independently owned franchise? That's located in a commercial space. Um, and have they been, were they in operation on January 1st? And then we are going to ask if they received other grant funding, although I don't think that that will disallow anybody. And then we will put all of that together with their application and turn it over to the city so that the city can determine if they are in good standing. We obviously don't have access to those files. Um, and then we were going to look at the total amount of requests and the total amount of applications and divide it equally. So that everybody gets some funding. Um, when this program was, when I was working with the city grant staff, we were talking about, um, $200, $2,000 being, um, set aside for administrative costs between the city and the chamber. I would like to amend that this evening with a couple of things. One of the, um, programs that Denise and Howell and Becca Sickbird and I walked around downtown yesterday. And one of the other situations that's come up a lot is needing additional outdoor seating for restaurants. And so how can we create some of that? And so what we're hoping to do is maybe take an additional 15,000 out of that 198. So it'd be 180, um, 3,000. Um, 10,000 of that would go to create, we're hoping four to six different outdoor seating areas where we could create, um, barricades to offset parking spaces. And we'll work with the planning department, the public works department, the parking department. And then, once we figure out those locations with those departments, go to the community and ask them to create art barriers that are very uniquely Manitou. And Becca Sickbird had an idea of using hula hoops and decorating those to create the barricades so they would be mobile and they could be repurposed. And then the other five, so we would put $10,000 into that program and then take the other $5,000 and create a banner program. And I may be able to share my screen with that, um, that is again, very uniquely Manitou, but the senior banners will be coming down soon. And so we'd like to put up some banners that would replace, um, and remind people about all of the different health, um, health, uh, oh, okay, I can't, I can't share my screen while, while this screen's being shared.
I can stop my sharing online if you want to jump in there.
Health issues. I'd love to show council this, um, this banner program. Becca Sickbird worked with Mackenzie Holmes and Alex, um, the city PIO to put this together, this concept. And it's in draft form. Uh, I don't know if I can reduce the size of these so that you can look through them. But here's a social distancing form. And then this one. And they're all under the, under the heading of Love the Town You're In, which Becca created.
Leslie, can you share your screen?
Oh, is it not shared? Sorry, I thought it was. Oh, can you see it now?
No. There you go.
It's still not coming up, huh?
Okay, it just came up.
Oh, okay, it did?
Yes.
So this is kind of tying, um, the posters that were around town with the, the social distancing posters that were made into signs. The color, um, the colors around are the colors from the hula hoops, um. So again, kind of creative, very Manitou. And putting these up throughout town on the banner poles. And reminding people about the, the health concerns that are still ongoing. It's a big deal to shop small. And then sip the healing waters, which we could. So, so these are all in draft form and, um, looking at the, the cost of the banners in previous, previous banners that have been done. I think if we take 5,000 from this funding program and find another 5,000 between the, the chamber budget, the bid budget, and potentially maybe a little bit from the URA to put these throughout town and then ask the city, maybe if we can have them hung, um, I think it'd be a, a great uniquely Manitou new banner program to go up. Does anybody have any questions on the banners?
I have a question.
Yes.
Did you just say you want to get URA money for your banners?
For the ones that would be in the URA area, but we do need to approach them. We do need to talk to the URA and see if they would be willing to provide banner, to pay for the banners that would go in that area. We want this program to be gateway to gateway.
Do you have any indication that these, um, signs and banners increases the number of people who wear masks or is that just an assumption?
I don't think that anything is going to increase the number of people that wear masks. Counselor Wolf, I think everybody is requesting that and, um, we have provided masks to the, to the stores downtown, um, on a continual basis and we still have those. They have some people who are wearing them and some people who don't wear them.
Right, and, but I appreciate your comment that you just said you don't think these signs will increase the chances of people deciding to wear a mask. I think that's significant. Why are we making all these banners and you already know that people aren't gonna obey? Our police don't wear masks. Our firemen don't wear masks. Most people walking through town don't wear masks. And we're sitting here like pretending like nodding our heads, oh, yeah, yeah. That this is a rational idea to spend money with signs, asking people if they want to please wear a mask? I don't know, it feels kind of hypocritical to me. I, I don't know, I, maybe visitors would prefer to see something other than being reminded about COVID every other block on the banner. Maybe they'd like to see pictures of delicious food that they can go buy at the keg and everywhere. I don't know, it's just, I just wanted to challenge the assumption that more COVID signs are gonna help anybody or, or accomplish anything, um, other than spend the, you know, the money. I'm not against it. I'm just saying, like, you know, is there any better option we should consider?
Let me let Leslie go ahead and get through her presentation here first and then we can have a general discussion, if that sounds okay. Leslie, again, please.
So, thank you. Um, so if we don't have a lot of businesses that apply for the funding and if there are funds left over, although I really believe that we're gonna see more applications, um, than, than not, um, then, then we would go back out to the public and, or to the business community and ask if somebody needed additional funding for, um, one of the projects that they were doing that, that they still had not gotten funding for. So the timeline that we were looking at is if, um, council approves this funding in the, the regular session next week, then we would open the application the next day and give businesses, and it'll be a very, very simple application. We're asking basic questions. How, how long have they been in business? What kind of business they are, how many employees they had before COVID, how many they have now. What they may need funds for, still making sure that they are not duplicating, um, benefits so that they're not using this grant to pay for things that they've already used another grant to pay for. Get a review of the applications, um, within two weeks and issuing award letters and checks. And then giving them a couple of weeks to bring back in receipts. And then chamber staff will match the receipts to the applications, provide that back to the city with a report so that the funds are spent and can be accounted for to El Paso County by September 1st.
Right. Counsel, do we have questions and comments for Leslie? Counselor Wolbrook? Excuse me, I believe Counselor Wolbrook had her hand up first.
I know, but she hasn't had a chance to answer my question, but that's fine.
Well.
It's fine, go to somebody else.
Susan, Susan and then Julie.
Okay, so Julie, I have an add-on to your question, so I'll just add that on and then you can, um, follow up on that. So I, I think that, that Councilwoman Wolf's point about these banners is certainly an interesting question about whether or not the chamber's best use of these types of banners and funds doing these, and while the city is certainly doing a similar effort around town as well. So I guess my question is, what did your board decide, um, about these banners? Was this a board vote? And I know the board represents your members and, um, and then I'd be curious to know what your board recommended when you approached them with this idea of putting banners up about COVID rather than, as Councilwoman Wolf suggested, something like things that you can do while you're in town or helpful information, uh, now that you're here. Um, then my other questions are, are these, and I'll run through them quickly so you can just answer them all at once. I know that it's 25 employees or less. Do you know what percentage of our businesses are 25 employees or less? That's one question. It looks like you're not distinguishing between, you're simply the organization that's going to disperse this money. You're not distinguishing between chamber or non-chamber members. And then from council correspondence and just walking down the street, um, there definitely has been expressed to me a desire for people who have been forced to be closed the entire time from day one until just recently, to be sort of given higher priority for these programs. There were some businesses in the central or could do curbside, and I'm not saying that they had it easy because I don't think they did. But a number of businesses had no ability to be open for this entire time. They're just asking, um, if that could be part of your consideration when you do this. Also, some people had better luck getting the payroll protection program and some people really got pushed off by their banks and never got the first round. And I don't know how successful they were in the second round. So I'm hoping that when they write their letters to you, they will be clear in the application what they have and haven't gotten, um, as well. So again, board vote on the banners, what percentage are 25 employees or less? And then whether or not being a member or not member will have any impact on this. Thank you.
So board vote, no, actually this hasn't been presented to the chamber board. Counselor Wolbrook, this actually has just come up in the last, um, week, and I haven't had a board meeting since then. So I was looking at it more outside of the chamber, looking at it with Creative District and the city as a collaboration. So that's a good point. I could certainly, and I, hopefully lots of them are listening tonight and they can email me what they think about them.
Can I just interrupt with that? There's just with a follow-on. I guess if your board hasn't weighed in, then I would also wonder if you could use a tool like email to maybe have them weigh in on this type of topic? About whether the banners should be COVID-related or something else, just an idea. I'm just throwing out, I'm just riffing on Julie's opening comments. Thank you.
Um, and I don't know how many businesses actually percentage-wise have 25 employees or less. Um, I am guessing that probably 90% of them that we're going to see apply for this at least. And then, um, I think the reason why we looked at taking the funds and dividing it by the number of applicants as long as they met the basic eligibility questions was so we were not accused of any kind of favoritism or, were not accused of any kind of favoritism or and because of the timeframe that we were looking at and trying to turn this as quickly as we are, that's why I backed away from the idea of having everybody submit their financials and doing some kind of a review of that using an outside agency to do that with some financial background like a bank and the team that worked on Survive and Thrive through Colorado Springs. So, it was just in an effort to try and turn it a lot quicker than that and not having actually that much money to be able to actually really fully vet it and be able to give businesses five and 10 and $20,000.
Excuse me, Judith, I think Julie was probably next. Julie, did you want to, Julie, did you want to restate your question or?
I guess I want to restate my comment is, although Susan did a beautiful job of doing it for me, so I, A, I think I agree with Leslie's intuition that putting up signs will not increase the likelihood of cooperation and that makes me sad and very disappointed, but I do agree that that's real life. And so, I also think that people are sick and tired of hearing about COVID all the time, that they don't want to come on vacation to Manitou and see more damn COVID signs. And I think that our businesses could really use some help and maybe, you know, they could participate, maybe they each want to have their own banner or have something really cool that interests people to say, hey, I've never been there, let's go check it out. I mean, almost anything, like even the weather would be more interesting to people than telling them to wear your mask. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Counselor Chandler?
Thank you. Hi, Leslie, thank you for your presentations tonight. I have a couple of comments. First of all, you mentioned allocating some funds for extra tables, outside seating and also I really like the unique idea of the hula hoop, so I would, I would support that. I have to agree with Counselors Wolf and Wolbrook. I'm trying to go into town once a day just to see what's going on and very few people are wearing masks or social distancing, which is unfortunately keeping me from going downtown and going to local stores, so, because I'm not going to risk infecting myself. So, but I don't, I don't think banners specifically addressing those, although it's a great idea and I wish people would read them and 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 wear masks and social distance, like, I think that could, that money could be better spent elsewhere. I do have one quick question and that is regards to in the unlikely event that we were to have people, there would be money left over, let's say we don't use the banner money, for example, and people want to, businesses want to reapply for a second round, would the same, would the micro grants also need to assist in only reopening costs? And if so, what's the reapplication process? Is it simpler than applying the first time or does some, a business have to, you know, go through the application process all over again?
I think that would just look at what additional expenses do you have that you need to, that that you're still looking to cover that weren't in your first application so that we could expand it that way and look at it.
And then you mentioned in the packet or it was mentioned in the packet that El Paso County might be coming forward with some other type of grant money and we want to make sure that we don't duplicate that. Do you know anything more about that?
I do not have the details on that. I know El Paso County is talking about launching another small business grant program and I would think that it would be the same thing. You could apply for it even though you've got a different grant, you just couldn't use it for the same expenses and they were looking at having up to $20,000 in those.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Do you have any other questions for Leslie? Julie, are you raising your hand in effect or?
Oh, no, thank you, I'm not. Thank you though.
Sure, okay, well, Leslie, I think that that you've done a good job of answering questions and whatnot, so we appreciate your, your time and your, your energy in putting that together and I'm sure we'll be in touch with you.
Okay, terrific. It was, the city's grant team was very hopeful, I have to give them the kudos.
Good, well, it's a shared among all of you, I imagine, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, our last discussional item is to, to talk about finding a council liaison person for, to serve with the, the match advisory board that we created last week or gave direction to. I guess, simple thing is, do we have any council members who are interested in serving as liaison to the match board?
I would certainly volunteer for it if, well, I'll just say I'll volunteer for it.
Okay. Does anyone else interested in serving, okay? Well, this certainly makes the election process simple, I think.
I nominate Nancy Protem.
Okay, well, it's a work session, so I think we, we'll, we'll take formal action next week, but I think we've...
I love it.
It's Nancy Protem. Okay, I think we've got some good direction on that, great. Well, thank you for volunteering, Nancy.
And so, that will come back at the next regular meeting as a resolution for approval.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, that concludes all the items we had for discussion items on the agenda. We can now move into council correspondence. Do we have anyone who'd like to start? Well, Mayor Protem, Nancy?
I always have something to say. Two things, one, I attended the kickoff meeting for the Soda Springs Park, the western end of Soda Springs Park, to get the construction documents completed and the, actually, construction done. So, they're looking at about a year to get that very western end redone using the GOCO grant that we got over a year ago. So, that's huge to get that up and started, so, yay. And secondly, I went to the Housing Advisory Board, well, Zoomed Housing Advisory Board, and they continue to work on creating a, like a checklist of minimum habitability standards for rental properties, looking specifically at safety, health and safety issues. So, interesting, surprisingly challenging initiative, so they're spending a lot of time coming up with a really good checklist on that. That's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Shada, you have anything?
I don't have anything to report.
Nothing, okay, thank you. Counselor Chandler?
I don't have anything this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bremner?
Nothing, looking forward to Thursday.
Counselor Wolf?
I've had communications with neighbors regarding the, the photo of the chief on Concerns about that.
Okay.
Is everybody aware of that on council? May I ask everybody just to confirm that, are you aware, do you know what I'm talking about, Steve or?
Raise your, raise your hand if you're familiar with what Counselor Wolf is talking about. Yeah, it looks, yeah, Julie, it looks like we all know, yeah, we know.
So, it was about that.
Yeah.
I don't want to go into it.
Okay.
You know, what I'm, everybody knows.
Okay.
Steve has his hand up, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, I was recognizing him. Steve?
I just have a comment about that. I think, and I've talked to the chief about it and I think he was set up in that situation and I believe everything that he said about the circumstances and so on and he wasn't holding that sign. So, I mean, I think it was unfortunate, but I think he's really done a lot to try and mitigate it and get past it, so I think it's lessons learned and we move on.
Yeah. Counselor Chandler, you have a comment relative to this, I think?
Thank you, Counselor Wolf, for, for bringing it up. I'm not going to say anything that I haven't already said to Chief Brian today, we had a great discussion and I think that he is an office awesome police chief. That said, I need to say out loud what disturbed me about the photograph. Couple of things, first of all, broken mask or no mask, there was no mask and there was no social distancing and there were some boundary issues with the photo and I do realize I'm an ex-mental health nurse, I know when we're dealing with people that potentially may have some mental health issues, that can be an issue. And so, what I would have liked to have seen happen, and I think this is a teachable moment, is that if that happens to any of us and if I have a mask and I'm wearing a mask and someone comes up to me and my mask breaks, I want to make sure I social distance and say, no, I cannot take a photograph with you right now until I go get a mask and we'll have to stand six feet apart. So, I, I think that, I think that there's a very happy medium. I know it's easy to say 2020, you know, after the fact, what you'd do differently, but those were some things that bothered me in addition to the All Lives Matter sign, which all of us at this point, everyone should know that that has some potential connotations, negative connotations. So, we want to avoid those situations and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wolbrook?
Yes, thank you. I only have both some correspondence, which I'll forward on to Council, Denise, where I'm the chief. Several of my neighbors were able to meet with Chief Churchill after this incident. That went very well, it went so well that they pretty much came back and sat on my deck with me and told me all about it, which was really great. I learned a lot. The videos that he referenced about his history in Indianapolis that he shared with us yesterday, my neighbors had already shared those with me early in the morning, so I think that's just a testament to how well those particular interactions with my residents, my neighbors basically in my ward went and I'll forward you a couple of comments that they made to me via text or email after doing that. You know, I just want to remind everybody that there's super, super strong feelings about wearing masks, but it is a recommendation, not a law, and I don't want to get into this, but it's important that we keep track of that because it is a recommendation, not a law. That same woman approached me on the sidewalk on her way to the police station, I did not know she was headed to the police station. She was pretty socially distanced from me until she lunged in front of me, planted herself and gave me her message. So, I wouldn't have had any opportunity to really do anything at all about that. I would not have, could not have prepared to social distance myself any further, could not have prepared in any way. I know the chief's situation with her was different because she gave him further, but I can just tell you that I had no opportunities to make any choices and as I mentioned in my email, I took that as her ability to share her First Amendment right and I, you know, let it go, not knowing where that was going. She also did that to a person who was probably about 10 feet behind me, also walking his dog, he kind of had the same reaction I did. Just a couple of things to remind people about, sometimes it's, you know, and Judith, your, your comments really made me think, like, I need to be thinking about that, so I do appreciate that. And then I just kind of flashed back and thought, wow, in that situation, I wasn't thinking very clearly about what I would do, so now I know a little bit more. I also don't know that it would have really changed that particular situation, but it might change one in the future, which is a good reason to bring it up. Thank you all for that.
Thank you. Counselor Chandler?
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate that and I did share a story in a mental health situation where I, I was totally taken aback and I have a master's degree in nursing science and I was absolutely duped by someone with a mental health issue and got roped into a situation that, that, you know, it was a teachable moment for me. So, I do get that these things happen. I do want to say one thing about masks. I, yes, they are not mandatory, however, I believe they're mandatory for city staff, employees and elected officials because we are role models and we need to set a precedent and lest I remind everyone, we are still in phase one of perhaps three or four phases of a global pandemic. So, I just, I just hope that staff, employees and elected officials don't consider it, consider it mandatory to wear a mask, if nothing else, to be a role model in town and the model appropriate behavior and safe behavior. That's it.
Thank you. We have Counselor Wolf, then Mayor Protem Fortune.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Judith's comment because it is worthwhile our debating whether we should perhaps require staff and all of us, if we wish to include, with a mandate for masks because I, you know, I hear Susan saying it's not required and then Judith, I agree with, is it should be of us, we're supposed to be the role models, the staff is supposed to be modeling this. We've put a ridiculous amount of effort into, I shouldn't say ridiculous, but we put a lot of effort into trying to encourage this behavior, you know, as to the people who are visiting us in town and living here and walking around, so maybe that's something we should put on the agenda for next week. Oh, John Shada, I like your mask, look at that. But, anyway, but maybe that's, I would propose that, I agree so much with how crucial this is that I, I don't want to just leave Judith's and Susan's comments just dangling there. I'd like to suggest that we have an opportunity to have a discussion about this ASAP because we may want to pass a resolution mandating that of our staff.
Okay. Guess we could get that on as a discussion.
I'm not taking a position on it today, I'm taking, I mean, I do agree with Judith, but I mean, I just, I really would like us to talk about it because right now staff, I don't know what Denise has told them, I don't know anything.
Okay, okay. Counselor, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, it's my understanding and it can be confirmed that staff is in fact required to wear their masks and I, having spent two years of my life, you know, getting a master's in public health, I'm a huge supporter of masks. I think that it is a culture that we need to adopt, which is kind of why, you know, I'm, one would say I'm a public health groupie, I suppose, but, but I love the banners, I think they're great, but I'm reserving comment because I, I don't know the efficacy of them in this environment, but I just think creating a culture of and an environment of wearing masks is critical to our city and I think it's a habit we're going to have to acquire across the board. It, it troubles me immensely that it's been turned into a, it's been totally, wearing a mask is totally politicized now. Politicizing public health is just hurtful to me. So, I think that Denise has in fact required all staff to wear them and created the conditions under which they must be worn and now it's a matter of enforce, well, enforcing and reminding people to keep doing, because it's an easy, it's a habit, you need to acquire it as a habit. So, it's, and I, I think absolutely all of us on council should wear them under all the same conditions as well. So, that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
It's just if I may follow up on that point, if I can have some guidance because as I indicated in my email recently, I've seen a police officer, I believe, and for sure, a fireman, neither, both of whom showed up right here, I could see them right outside my kitchen window, interacting with the public and with no masks. So, when that happens, do I, should I just sit here and be cranky or should I tattletale to Denise or do I call 911? What, what do you suggest the next time that happens that I should do?
Denise, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, if you just send me an email, especially if you kind of know the date, the time, et cetera.
Yeah. If you just send me an email, especially if you kind of know the date, the time, et cetera, that will help. And then I can follow up to see what happened.
Thank you. I, I wasn't aware that it was a requirement for staff, so I appreciate learning that. That's helpful. Otherwise, I would have notified you that same, you know, when it happened.
Counselor Wolbrook, you had your hand up, Susan?
Thank you. A couple of things related to this about, you know, so I think we need to decide if we're going to put this on an agenda so that we can have more discussion and debate about this. They, and so under the guise of that being the next thing that we do, as this is council correspondence, and I hope that Judy Morgan isn't getting too itchy with us on this. But there's a couple of things that we should think about if we're going to put this on the agenda. I don't know that I feel comfortable about whether or not how effective masks are. So that's a big question. We're all doing it. And I agree with Nancy that it's been highly regarded. But for sure, I get nervous about policies when we are new to COVID and new to all of this, when there's been intense debate at the CDC level as well as other levels about whether or not we should do this. So as we put this on the agenda, I think that I would love to see some science from some authorities on this, rather than us just sharing our opinions about it. And I think that our entire town needs to see that, not just a discussion of our opinions or of that, but we need to see what kind of data is out there about what, whether or not this is helpful or not. I will be the first to tell you all tonight that I actually have struggled very hard physically with wearing a mask, and I've tried multiple different masks, to the point that I actually had a teledot visit with my doctor and said, I don't know why I'm struggling so much, but wearing a mask makes me feel sick. It causes me to sneeze. It causes me to have major allergy symptoms. Actually, if I wear a mask for four or five hours, I actually can't do hardly anything for the rest of the day. So I actually got a note that says I'm exempt from wearing one. However, it's my, it's a HIPAA issue whether or not I want to show you that note, okay? Because that's my medical information, and I'm certainly not going to show it to a stranger on the street who stops me and engages me in a debate about wearing a mask or not. This is an issue that I bring up to you tonight because you will see me around town not wearing a mask. I can wear a mask for a little while, and I've been coming into City Hall and wearing one. So it's not an issue for a short thing. And I'm definitely being respectful of businesses that want me to wear one where I don't need to interact with them. But in terms of coming back to a council meeting, even if I'm socially distanced from you, I'm not going to be able to do that for four to six hours. So I don't know how Denise is going to handle all of these issues because even though she's made that a mandatory policy, she may be faced with some employees who just, who have issues. I don't really understand how police and fire are dealing with this. And I understand your concern, Councilwoman Wolf, but one of the problems with a mask, is you can't, I can't tell if you're smiling. I can't tell if you're frowning. And if I'm a police officer and I'm trying to deal with someone, I don't know what, what's more important, right? Them being able to really relate to me and understand what I'm saying and doing? Or me worrying about, or me as a police officer worrying about COVID? I just think that this is a policy area that the city, it's easy to say it's a mandatory policy and we're all going to wear masks. But I think what's going to shake out of this is a lot of these types of issues that HR is going to have to help us deal with. I'm just saying it's, it's a really big issue for me. I didn't expect to have this reaction to doing it, didn't expect any of this, but I am dealing with some of these things. I don't suspect I'll be the only one who's dealing with it. And I do suspect that the longer it goes on, the more of an issue it also becomes for our city in terms of HR and liability and all these different things. Don't have answers, but if we're going to put this on, I'd like to see the science. And I'd like to feel, know as a city how we're dealing with enforcing this policy and what exemptions there are and what situations are, you know, part of those exemptions. Thanks.
Counselor Chandler?
Thank you, Counselor Wolbrook. You brought up some really great points. I've been really following the research on COVID-19. It's, it's almost a daily thing. We'll call it a hobby. And the scientist saying that masks alone, unless they're an N95 or a shield mask in and of themselves, a cloth mask, is really not very effective. However, researchers are saying absolutely, if you combine wearing a mask, which is me saying I don't want to give you anything I have more than I'm afraid of getting what you've got. But if you combine the mask with the social distancing and hand washing, that those three things together, you know, are in the 70 to 85%, you know, category of decreasing the risk of getting coronavirus. So I agree with bringing research and what the science says to the table. I also have to remind you that in the last 24 hours globally, we've seen the highest number in a 24-hour period. And in the United States, 17 states are now having rises in hotspots. We don't know if it's increased testing or it's, if it's because people are, cities are opening up, and now we have the protests. So we'll see in a couple of weeks what, how that pans out. But I just think all those things, if, if we are going to put it on agenda, I, I agree absolutely, we have to bring the science to the table and have a really robust discussion about it.
Well, okay, relative to the idea of bringing this to an agenda item, I guess there's several, several ways we can look. We can, we can bring it, put it on agenda and discuss it some. I think, I think my sense is that members of council feel like we are, our job is to set an example so that we should be using masks. And in my mind, it might be appropriate to ask Denise to, you know, to, to fortify, to make another stab at encouraging the city staff to comply with the masks. I, I think that might save council a little bit of time. But if, if there's enough interest in putting on the agenda, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I just think we may talk about it and end up asking Denise to, to go out and, you know, further try to get a higher level of compliance among some city employees. So that said, I will ask, who would, who would like to have this on the agenda for next week? If you can raise your hand?
I think that's too soon.
Okay, too soon. Okay. All right. That's fine. Well, we can keep this in mind. I think Denise and Roy, it would be appropriate to, to fortify your, your directions to the, to city staff. That would be good. I did have several things on council correspondence that I wanted to mention. I had an opportunity to speak with the police chief last week. We discussed a number of things, and we see he subsequently sent out a lot of information. I think that shows us a lot of the ideas he has. He did want to, he did talk about wanting to get around and, you know, walk downtown and visit with people and have coffee with the cop and do some outreach things, which would basically carry out that mission of community policing. So I think that, that's a good step forward. I did have a conversation also with, the phone conversation with John Weiss yesterday. I think you know John. He's the publisher of The Independent and The Bulletin. John has recently become involved in an effort to legalize recreational marijuana in Colorado Springs. And apparently this would be, he anticipates that this would go on the ballot in November. You know, obviously, that's, I think that's kind of a chilling thing for Manitou since about 40% of our budget comes from marijuana sales, the tax on marijuana. So if, if they did legalize in Colorado Springs, we'd have a huge, a huge earthquake, I think, in our, in our, in our tax collection picture. So that's fairly sobering. I'll call that to your attention. I think John's expectation is that they'd have more detailed direction in July as far as what, what the group he's with is, is going to do. And we did discuss the, the implications it would have for Manitou. So, yeah, it's, I think that's fairly sobering. And the third thing is Thursday night, we'll be having a, an extra work session to discuss the incline. And I think Roy may want to provide some more details on that. That said, let's move on to the city administrator's report. So the parking logic signs will be coming in this week, and we're hoping to get those up in the next two weeks. So again, those are the signs to help with indicating parking lot occupancy. And we'll be able to put that on the website as well, so people know where lots are available and parking spaces available. And yeah, Thursday will be the incline discussion with Colorado Springs. I believe it's going to be set at 6:00 PM, and I talked to everyone here already about what we're going to be discussing that night. And that's all I have on that. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Denise?
I only really have one thing, and that is I sent out to all of you, I think, today, maybe it was yesterday. Sorry, I can't remember, about, or Elspins Utilities reached out to us and asked if any of you would like to present or be at least at the meeting when they present the EIRP and the GIRP, which is the Electric Integrated Resource Plan and the Gas Integrated Resource Plan. I believe that takes place next week. So if you would like to present or make a couple of statements, please let me know, and I'll let them know so that you can put on the agenda.
Great. Thank you. Well, I think that's, everything's on the agenda, so it looks like we've got our business done. It's time to adjourn. So. Y'all have a good evening. Take care. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Y'all stay well. Be healthy.
You too.
See you Thursday.